Okay, everybody. I love it. So, welcome to the October 21st Instructional Committee Meeting of the Concord School Board. We have a pretty specific agenda tonight. We're going to just hear some, actually quite a bit of updates from Kathleen, our superintendent, and from principals at every level of our district, high school, middle school, elementary. We've just been in hybrid a couple of weeks now, and it has been, in my opinion, from what I've heard, mostly wonderful, but as with everything now, our lives sort of live on a rubber raft in the ocean, and the slightest wind can tip everything one way or another. So, we're going to spend tonight getting some updates from our district administrators on the goods and the bads and the who knows of our district right now. So Kathleen, I'm just going to hand it to you and let me know what you need.
Well, thanks. Thank you. I think we should start out with our building principals. I think they have some comments and have some prepared remarks for you regarding each of their levels, elementary, middle, and high school. So, I'd like to start with a principal.
That sounds perfectly fine. I'm really going to let you handle it in a way that's good for you, because you're the one with all the information.
Yeah.
We have, we have, we do have all the committee members present. Gina's present, I'm here, Danielle is here, David Parker, I see you up there. And then we also have Liza, and Tom, and you. We do. It's a good place to be.
Do you want me here? Is this okay? Am I over here? I don't know where you want me.
Anyplace.
Am I on?
I don't, doesn't sound.
Doesn't sound. Am I on?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, great, thanks. So, I'm here representing elementary. I'm going to talk a little bit about Broken Ground School, and we have only had six days of hybrid, because we didn't start back until October 13th. So, each of our cohorts has had three days to come. It's been overall really, really positive. In addition, we have three remote classes, one for third grade, one for fourth grade, and one for fifth grade. And that also has been going well, but again, those classes were reconfigured based on parents', you know, preference that they wanted to have for their students. So, everybody's kind of starting new in different ways, you know? One of the great things about Broken Ground, it's an older building, but it was well-designed from the perspective of having lots of entrances for kids to be able to come in. So, we have all of our fourth and fifth grade students coming in along the Portsmouth Street side. There's six entrances that go right into the classrooms. So, students are able to be outside where somebody meets them, have their temperature taken, they're able to have, you know, check on their health and how they're doing, and then they go right into their classrooms, pick up their breakfast, and go right into their classroom right at that time. So, that's been a really positive thing. The third grade students who are housed, their classrooms are in the back of the building, do still come in by the front of the building. But again, that's a much smaller number of students coming down that main hall. Again, they have their temps outside and then come in. So, that's been really good in terms of that. We have many more families driving students to and from school than we've had in the past, which again is wonderful. Overall, that's worked really well, with the exception of us trying to encourage folks to get people there promptly so that we can start at 7:45. That's been a little bit of a challenge. You know, people have been home, working remotely, and that morning pressure hasn't had to be there, so we're working with families on trying to get kids in there on time. Of course, this change of moving to hybrid and remote after five weeks of being fully remote has meant that we had to slow down, take a breath, and think about teaching the routines that are now different for these eight- to eleven-year-old kids. So, we've had to take that step back and do that. Students that were with us last year, of course, knew some of the routines, but they're quite surprised to find that there's all new things that we now do. We do things in many different ways because of the safety protocols that have been put into place. So, again, what they expect sometimes is somewhat different. An example is, there's only one student that can leave from the whole grade level to go to the bathroom at a time, because they're using bathrooms, and they get there and they have a, you know, clothes sign or a red, red sign saying that somebody's there, and they have to wait out and then go in one at a time. So, those kind of things are just different. They don't go to the library. A cart comes into their room, and they can choose any of the books they want, but it's not the same, again, as just having that flexibility and that independence. Kids have been used to having jobs like going to the cafeteria to get the snacks. We're not having them do that anymore. And they don't love that they're not able to be independent, to have all these jobs in the building, to do the morning announcements. They don't love that they're not able to do that. So, there's things that are changes that we're working through, but overall, kids are so resilient, and they've been so positive and upbeat, and coming up with other things that are great about it. They love that we're eating outside under tents. They love that we're spending more time outside. So, there's lots of pluses in terms of that. They love that they get to see their friends on a regular basis. They love seeing their teachers in person and having those extra time with them. So, there's lots of pluses and minuses that we have to pay attention to. We're still working on students with the hybrid model. They have their school day schedules, their at-home independent workday schedules, and their Wednesday schedules where they're coming on and have to be on morning meeting at 7:45, and meeting with their teachers online. So, that's a lot to juggle when you're those ages. And so, teachers are doing an amazing job connecting with families. They're sending printed things home on their Chromebooks. They have their actual schedule so kids can see what they need to do, and they can follow it, check things off. But again, it's just a new schedule for them. Another thing students are really enjoying is that in hybrid, that we haven't had the opportunity for them to do for six months, is some of the amazing curriculum we have that we wouldn't have access to when they're at home. We have amazing reading literacy materials and math materials that they're now able to use in school, and that's been wonderful for them to, you know, get back into using. Let's see. I will say that teachers and staff have really been going above and beyond to support the students' learning where they're at, regardless of what grade level they're assigned to, because that spread and span has broadened than it was before. So, they've been doing a great job. I want to speak to our special teachers, art, music, PE, and tech media, because they've all had to be very creative and figure out ways to provide their amazing programs in different locations. At Broken Ground, you're going to see music classes outside, you're going to see phys ed classes outside, you're going to see the Milbrook PE teacher outside in our, in our yard. So, we've made that work really well. It's always fun to be walking down the hall and to see the art cart go by, which has fluorescent colors flashing as she moves her materials into the next class. So, they've been super creative and done an amazing job, still giving them a really, really rich curriculum. That said, I do want to say that those special teachers advocate tirelessly, all the time to me, to go back to their real spaces, to use those gyms, the art rooms, and the music room, which are also great. So, it's something that we know we need to do for now, but it is something that people do hope that we can get back to in the, in the future. I also wanted to speak to 21C. It started, it started small at Broken Ground, but it's been going very well, and students have really enjoyed it. And so, I think that they're hoping to add another 10 students, I believe, starting next week, which will be terrific. They also offer activities to kids on Wednesdays. Yes, Gina?
Sorry, I forgot. Can you explain what 21C is, where people move?
21C is an after-school program that's federally funded grant, and it offers programming in our school for three hours, 2:30 to 5:30 each day. And we, as I said, we started really small, but in the past, it's been a pretty large program where kids would sign up, for kids that needed to stay later, for parents to pick them up. They get homework help, they can get literacy and math extra doses, if you will, or extra activities that they find really enriching. They might do things like play crypto, or things like that, chess, things like that. But right now, we started very small. We have them just in the art room, and again, we're, and the outside spaces. So, it's been a great program, but I said, as we said, we're starting small and sort of inching up. We're going to start using two spaces next week. Thank you, Gina, though. I guess my overall message is that, you know, the kids have been enthusiastic and energetic, and that certainly bodes well in terms of our school, and it's keeping us in a really positive trajectory. It's been really great. But kids know how to use the Chromebook, they know how to use Google Classroom, and so if, in fact, we have to pivot at some point in time, we'll be able to do it. And I think making these connections is going to go a long way. I know we're going to talk about attendance later. I didn't think about talking about attendance before, but that is a work in progress. We are trying to make sure that we do take morning attendance in every class and online and all of that. But there are kids that are coming on in the morning and might not show back up, or, you know, they turn off their, their cameras and they're not doing the work. So, we are trying to be really lenient in terms of how we're taking attendance. If kids are submitting the work that needs to be done for a given day, that counts as being there. So, we're, you know, we're still working on some of this, but again, attendance is a tricky part. Attendance isn't bad by any means, but it's, in terms of them being there the whole day, it's not the same as in the old days when they came in the morning and we had them till 2:30. Sometimes they're not all on during that whole time, so. If there's any other questions, I'm glad to ask, answer them.
I have a comment.
Sure.
Just as a, as a career special educator and coach of teenage girls, looking at the mental health issues that are pervasive around students that struggle, everything you're saying just eases my mind so much in terms of the feeling of predictability and safety that none of our kids have right now. The littlest things, learning a new way to eat lunch, walking down a hallway they haven't seen in four months or six months, all of these things that can get lost in our struggle to provide proper special ed services and make sure they're reading on grade level. I mean, these things are all incredibly important, but nothing will go well if we can't start to instill some kind of predictability. So, I just feel, as an educator and a mother, and always a champion for the underdog, that these are, this is a really good start. We're going to have our struggles, I'm sure, but I love all these little anecdotes. I can picture it all in my head, and it eases my mind. So, I just, a huge thank you to you and to all the elementary principals and teachers. There's also a Facebook group called Educators of the 603. It is phenomenal. It's primarily teachers, so much great information, and so many good things come from our district on that, on that site. Makes me, you know, just proud to be in a district that's so committed in doing such a good job. So, I'm just fluffing you up.
Great, thank you. Gina? I know I do.
Here, well, how about this?
I can bring it down.
Yep.
As long as I don't strip over this. Yeah, absolutely.
So, I just, as a very limited-time fifth-grade teacher and also outdoor education, I want to encourage the principals who are doing things outside to just spend a couple of brain cells bandwidth of how, what's working well, and how maybe can we incorporate some of this after the pandemic?
Oh, yeah.
Can you ask my question?
Sure.
So, I just wanted to know, we've heard from a lot of people say elementary school kids can't wear masks, they won't do it, they won't tolerate it, they won't stay distant. Can you comment on their wearing of masks and distance for, with regards to, you know, the times that they go to school? You might be able to keep that in your work.
Yeah.
I'll summarize a little bit.
So, Jim was asking, there was a lot of concern about how our elementary kids are going to do with masks and social distancing. How is that going with masks, social distancing, keeping the kids, you know, appropriate distance apart and?
It's actually, we're grades three through five, so the kids are a little bit older than in some of the other schools, but it's been going very, very well. We have kids that will come, you know, maybe be dropped off from their family, and they might have forgotten the mask. The first thing they say as they get out is, "I need to get, I need to borrow a mask." So, they're very good about wanting to keep it on. Kids, if you go out and watch at recess time, they don't take their masks off half the time. They run around with them. They're getting used to just wearing them for hours at a time. We have mask breaks, but I am telling you, the kids almost forget they have them on and just wear them for a really long time. We had a child that has special needs, who we didn't think was going to be able to wear a mask. The staff was amazing, spent time at his home, working up to a certain amount of time for him to be able to do this. This was at the very start of the school year, and he comes in every day. He does have a space that he works outside a lot, like under a tent, a small tent. But he comes in every day, and he's wearing his mask for up to two hours, and then he starts to pull on it, and you know that's a signal, and they'll get him back outside. So, it's been very, very good. Social distancing is a little trickier. We do have marks in the hall, and so kids will, you know, get on the mark when it's that time to do that. We have some third-grade teachers that have used, you know, the rope, and every six feet has the knot, and they hold the knot, and as they're walking as a group, and they've done that. They don't cluster way up. We have the one-foot tiles in our hall the kids are really good about, you know, "Okay, I can go now," you know, that kind of thing, and sort of counting. But they're not, I wouldn't say that that's the easiest thing for them, lots of reminders about, you know, spreading out and all of that. We've tried to make sure that our, that our procedures help that, so that instead of serving from one place, like having a box where they come to get lunch, we've spread them out into locations so that, you know, three kids can go up, do you know what I mean, at a time, and then there's less likelihood of them sort of clustering that way. So, that's kind of the way. We've been trying to set up the environment to maximize that, but they want to do the right thing, but it's just, it's hard when you're, it's hard for the grownups. I have remind the grownups too in our building, so. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. In terms of the outdoor part, Broken Ground has wonderful trails behind us, and we have always loved using our environment around the school. We're really lucky in that way, and so it's something that we really enjoy. We do have some teachers who absolutely love doing outdoor things all the time, and we have others that do it, but maybe it's not their favorite part. So, again, it's kind of nice when those people that, that's like their passion, give ideas to other folks that we can share and use, but it's, it's wonderful to have the kids outside, and they really do enjoy it. I will say, while my special teachers are, you know, asking to go back and use a music room or to use the gym, the kids love it out there. So, it's going to get cold, though. And although, you know, the students are out there for 45 minutes, some of those staff are out there for six hours. That's a long time to be out in the cold, so we'll have to, you know, watch that over time. Okay? Thanks.
Are there any questions from anyone tuning in from home? I don't think I see any. Susan, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Kathleen, who would you like to invite up next?
I'm going to ask Ms. Taylor.
All right. It's your big day, Paulette. It's your moment in the sun.
We have a few slides to share with you, with some pictures of, of the kids in the Donna, you're doing better with your emails than I am, I'm just saying. So, I can start, when Donna pulls the slides up, you'll see some, just some overall numbers about student enrollment, and then you'll see some data about our teachers, and then all of the good things. So, we're starting with all of the good things that are happening, and there are a lot of good things. You know, there is a silver lining in, in every cloud, and so we've been really trying to focus on that. Right. Yep. I thought it was through email. Or, actually, if you go to slides, maybe. No, no, no problem. Oh, yep. Fourth over. There you go. All right, you can go to the. Awesome. All right. So, just overall, student enrollment, number of hybrid students, 693, number of remote students, 209. That's as of yesterday. Things are still somewhat fluid. The picture that you see there was the first day with sixth graders. We had little cones put out, they were all lined up, teachers came out with their signs, and, and again, as Susan said, we are taking temperatures and asking students verbally, you know, the, all of the screening questions, and don't they look happy to be back? There are a couple that are a little too close there, so they need reminders, but it, it was a joyous day, I have to say, to have them come back. So, teachers working remotely, we have 11 out of 86 teachers who are working remotely, service providers, one out of four, support staff, five out of 29.4. And then we continue to have some open positions. I just wanted to give you an idea of who we have in the building and, you know, what we're, we're managing. And there you see some eighth graders who are waiting to go into class, and they are more socially distanced, you can see that. To, I know that there was the question earlier about masks. Our kids have been, of course, they're older, but sometimes middle schoolers, it's not always easier, they have been great about the mask wearing. So, we go to the next slide. So, what's working well? So, we have quite a list of what's working well, and so we wanted to share that with you. It has been truly a whole-school effort to make all of this work, from our, our support staff, teachers, nurse, administrators, admin assistants. It's been, it's taken our whole little village. Arrival is going very well. What you saw in the, with the kids arriving that first day, now that they know where they're going, they just line up in, at their different doorways. We screen them, and then they go right into class. And so, that's been working very well. Once they get into class, they pull out their Chromebooks, and then they do an online screening form too. And so, if kids are struggling with reading, the teacher's reading them, and then they're responding, and our nurse tracks that. So, if we miss some, something on the way in, when we're doing it verbally, the nurse goes through, and she calls down anyone who answered yes to the questions. Staff screening also is going very, very well. Mask wearing, really well. I have, and I'm saying this because I was, I had some worries. I was a little concerned. Most of the kids now, if the mask is slipping down, we just kind of do the signal, and they, and they pull their masks up, and we're seeing quite a variety of masks, too. Our classroom setups are working very well. Matt Cashman and I, I think we've measured just about every classroom at Runblitt Middle School, and worked with teachers to make sure every, every desk or table is six feet apart. Teachers have marked the walking routes within the classroom with tape on the floor. That's going quite well. Hallways, I know in the previous picture, I don't know if you noticed, there's a blue line down with the arrows marking the directions, so the kids are really respecting those. Thanks, Donna. Let me see, hallways. Breakfast and lunch. Breakfast is a grab-and-go, so as kids are screened, they walk in the door, they can take a breakfast if they want, they eat that right in the classroom. We don't have a lot of kids who eat breakfast. Lunch has been in the cafeteria. Again, we've measured everything. We use our new activity room for overflow, and you'll see a picture in a couple of slides of what the cafeteria looks like. It's working very well. The kids are seated all in the same direction, two students at a table, they're six feet apart, everything has been measured. Recession, every cluster goes to a different part of the campus, staying with their groups. And dismissal, we have a very staggered dismissal, and so that's working very well, too. Of course, we have Jay Wimpy there helping with buses and, and all of that. As Susan said, we do have many more families picking kids up, so, so everything goes remarkably smoothly. It's been really awesome. We have daily advisory, and that's where we take attendance. We also take period attendance, but every day, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, students are meeting with their advisor. And I think that has been really key. There's been, there have been really strong connections made there. They're staying with those advisors, which has been a little awkward, because in some classrooms, kids are, they're zooming in with their advisor, but we wanted to keep that constant connection there for them. So, the reason I bring up advisory again is because we've done a lot of our social-emotional connections, building connections, a lot of that work has taken place during advisory. It was also a great time for teachers to work with their small group and prepare kids for what it would look like to come back, and what it would look like if kids were staying remote. So, that has been like a really good part of the day. So, we put our social-emotional learning up there too, which is incorporated into advisory, but I really wanted to mention that we have two teachers who are enrolled in coursework right now on mindfulness, and they are working with our sixth-grade advisories, just going through, teaching them mindfulness practices. And so, what we've started to do at the end of sixth-grade lunch, and you really have to come and see this, Kathleen, I have to invite you over. One of these teachers comes in, and we do a mindfulness moment at the end of lunch to prepare the kids to transition to their next class. And it, there's such a sense of calm in that cafeteria, and you know, if you've ever set foot in a middle school cafeteria, what, what it can be like. So, and of course, meeting teachers in person, that has just been great, and I should say meeting students in person, because that positive really has gone both ways. All right. Issues that we've resolved, of course, we had to do all of our groupings for both remote and hybrid, took a lot of planning, aligning students with siblings in other buildings. There was a lot of communication with the high school and with our elementary colleagues, trying to get that all straightened out. And then the scheduling, the sixth-grade scheduling was pretty easy. Seventh grade, we have different math groups. Eighth grade, we have math groups and world languages, so that was probably the most complicated grade level of all. And then we had hybrid and remote exploratories to figure out, but we, it took us some time, but we had that pretty much ironed out, I'm happy to say. And we've also done all of this knowing that we could very well have to pivot to remote, so everything will be just very seamless. They'll just stay with their same groups, and so that will be good. You see a picture there of the cafeteria. You can see the students are all facing in the same direction, two to a table. Again, everything has been measured with a big six-foot stick, and, you know, the, the chairs have X's on them. The tables are also numbered, so students have, will have their assigned tables that they know that they have to go to. That has, in all honesty, has hampered the socialization a little bit, but silver lining. I don't know if you've ever heard of Mix It Up at Lunch Day? We now kind of have Mix It Up at Lunch a Lot Day, in that kids are not necessarily eating with, with friends, they're eating with peers. And so, we're planning advisory lessons about how to strike up a conversation with someone that you don't really know, because they really need some support with that. So, it's been really fascinating to watch that, and to see some friendships starting to develop even after just a couple of days between kids who may not have been friends before, so.
I would think this sort of assigned seating and this directed seating takes away that horrifying feeling when you're 12 of like, where are my friends, and where's a table for me to sit at?
Correct.
I know both of my daughters hated lunch.
Yeah.
For that very reason, where do I sit? I can't see my friends.
Yeah.
And you sit someplace that you don't know anyone, and this just must make it so much less stressful in that regard.
Yes, absolutely.
And then people are friends that might never be friends.
Yes.
The bullying doesn't happen so much, because there's no room for it.
Yes. So, again, this is like, there have been, there are the unintended consequences that are, give us headaches, and then the unintended consequences that truly bring joy. I know that sounds kind of cheesy, but it, but it's true. All right. And issues that we are continuing to work on. In sixth grade, we have one remote cluster. We have two teachers who are remote, and so we were able to assign the kids to that one cluster. That cluster is getting pretty full, so we're really trying to figure out, do we have another cluster that's remote, but it will be based on numbers. So, in seventh and eighth grade, teachers have some classes where they are teaching both hybrid and remote. We're trying to get it down to just one class that's hybrid and remote, so those are some of the kinks that we're still trying to, to iron out. Special ed services right now are, in several situations, hybrid and remote, and so we're trying to figure that out, but staffing is slim, so. And we also have some unfilled positions. We're actively hiring attendants. Though our attendance is good, we always want it to be 100%. Though our attendance is good, we always want it to be 100%. So we're constantly monitoring attendance, constantly making phone calls, constantly, you know, we've had Jay Wimpy go out to houses to bring letters, things like that. We, we need monitors for our remote teachers, who, so we need someone in the classroom with the kids while the teacher is teaching from their home. And nursing coverage is pretty tight, because if a student comes to school with any of those symptoms, even though that's a very low threshold, the nurse has to respond to that, so. And then staffing overall is, is, is pretty strained. We're making it work, but it's, it's pretty strained. And anticipated issues. So we're looking at technology to support teachers, the teachers who are teaching both hybrid and remote students. And I have to talk with Mr. Riordan, because I heard they have Bluetooth speakers at the high school that really help. So that's one of the things that, that came up. Hybrid classes right now, in seventh grade especially, are at capacity, so we're questioning our ability to take more students who may want to come in hybrid. Right now, we're seeing it more in the other direction as cases are going up, but that's something we're really watching closely. And the increasing strain, we've had a number of teachers who have had to quarantine, and that is nobody's fault. I mean, I was talking for quite a while to a teacher on Sunday, who was very upset because he, I went through the whole process. Nurse Lanny has trained me well on, on who needed to quarantine, and he was very upset, and he was, "Paula, I don't want to be home." I know, but you have to be, because you, you know, so it's, it's nobody's fault, but it is an issue that we have to try to plan for. And again, nursing coverage. So I just wanted to give this committee kind of a global overview of what's going on at Runlet. And then that, that's recess. So the kids go out by their pod and their cohort, and they're pretty, pretty distant, or they have their masks on there, but they're having fun. Actually, that cluster's not distant, but
They're kids.
But to the right, they are. But they're middle schoolers. So actually, I was sending an email out to staff this afternoon and said, "Things are working really well. They need reminders, just like we need reminders. As humans, we tend to walk towards each other to talk." And so middle schoolers tend to do that, too. But they're very responsive. We're just like, "Six feet, guys," and they're like, "Oh." So, I don't know if you have any questions after that?
Knowing the middle school schedule and how many pieces go into making it work, it's like choreographing a musical theater number with 60 dancers, you know, you have eight minutes of a song to make it work.
True story there.
So I wanted to acknowledge that piece. As a board member and as the instructional committee chair, the communication I get typically is when people are unhappy about something.
Correct.
And I don't, I'm not putting you on the spot at all. I just feel that it's, as a special educator in this district for 15 years and 31 years total, the services, the special ed piece, I can't imagine how difficult this is with all of the factors in play, what cluster, remote or hybrid, which day, where are your siblings, all of this. So at some point, maybe Kathleen, we can have a real specific update on special ed services and where you need help. If this is something that's overwhelming and falling apart, the board is here not only to supervise, but also to, you know, brainstorm and advocate and look into ways to provide support to you guys for the special ed piece.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. There's a million, and I try to be as supportive as I can in my return emails, because, you know, we, Kathleen and I talk all the time, so, which is also very helpful to me, because I feel like I have a sense of it. But yeah, you have to balance elementary on one side, high school on the other. You know, you've got kids coming in, and they're 11, and then they're leaving as high school students. The three years at Runlet are huge. So I imagine this is like a roller coaster that the off button broke.
Right. Kind of like that, yeah. Kathleen has been very involved in, in special ed as well, and has sat in on some meetings and has been very supportive. It is, it is a big Rubik's Cube that we're trying to get all those sides right, and it's very complicated. We take it very, very seriously, and we're trying to respond and trying to, again, I wanted to do this, this evening, to, to give you an idea of what we're looking at, what's working well, and, and the other things that we're, we're anticipating. Special ed is embedded in every piece of that.
Oh, I know.
So, thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up.
And I also get the same feedback from families and friends that I know, that, that for the most part, it's, their kids are so darn happy to be back in the building, that, you know, no one wants to misbehave, because they don't want to get in trouble and not be able to be there. So, yeah. Thank you, Paula. Does anyone else?
Thank you.
Tom, it's your turn.
Thank you. Hi, Paula, thanks for coming in tonight, and thank you to Susan as well. Paula, we've heard this, this term called waitlist. Can you talk to me and the board and the public a little bit about what that is and what's happening with that right now?
I'm so glad that you brought that up. Thank you for bringing that up. We did a virtual parent information night a couple of weeks ago, leading into hybrid. The next day, we received many, many, many requests to have kids come into the building. We needed to put a pause. We couldn't respond to all of them immediately. So I, Kathleen and I talked, and we said, "Okay, we'll just tell parents, just need to wait." I think probably by the following Monday, or at latest, maybe Tuesday afternoon, we had all of those students placed. But it's not as easy as putting a student, "Oh, he just wants to come in." We're looking at numbers, we're looking at all of those things, and we didn't expect the, the number of responses that we received wanting to, kids to come into the building. So that's where that waitlist came from. Does that answer that?
It certainly does, and thank you. So is that connected to your comment that hybrid is at capacity at this point?
For seventh grade, it is, and I hesitate to say at capacity, because we're pretty creative people, Tom. So I, you know, I would like to think of other things that we can do, but if we're looking at, in a traditional classroom, where we're at capacity in seventh grade, if we have more kids who want to come in, we'll have to look at other spaces. So I don't want to say, "We can't take any more kids," because we want to take all of our kids. So we just have to continue to be creative. Yes.
Is there, thank you, Paula, is there, is there anything that this board can do to, to help you? I'm sure you've already expressed certain things to Kathleen. That's sort of a rhetorical question, but we all want to help, and we all want to make everything successful for, for you and for our kids. Is there anything that we can do?
No, I think we have the ability now to hire monitors, which will be very, very helpful. We just have to get those people in. I know we have three that we've interviewed, and we're trying to get that paperwork completed by the end of the week. So I, I think it's, it's just, it's some time, and we never feel like we have enough time. So I appreciate that, and if I think of something, or my admin team, or my teachers think of anything, I'll be sure to let Kathleen know, so she can communicate that to you. I also, I really need to give a shout out to, to teachers who are working their tails off. They're going above and beyond, and as, one of the beautiful things about hybrid is we've been able to get into classrooms and sit and watch them weave their magic. Even the teachers who have some kids, you know, on their, who are zooming in, and they have the kids in front of them, and they're, they're really working hard, and they are very eager to learn. You know, every Wednesday, our tech, our digital learning specialist has reached out to the companies from whom we have bought various applications, and so we're offering PD for our teachers every Wednesday at noon. It's optional, just to help them develop their skills. And I also would like to thank parents who have been extremely patient through a very frustrating time, so.
Good. Thank you, and to all of your staff as well.
Well, thanks. Gina, did you have a question?
She'll need your microphone.
Oh. Okay.
So I had a question about the capacity thing. Is that physical space capacity? It's not staffing capacity. It's physical space capacity. So by having to have six feet distance and splitting the kids up in two, so that we're only maximum getting 50%, but earlier, when we talked about numbers, before we even started all of this, the numbers that were coming back looked like approximately 25% of the people answered that they wanted their kids to be remote. Is that not the experience in the junior high? Is it, is it that 75% divided by two still doesn't meet the six, six feet? Is it, do you know what I'm asking? I mean, do we have more people coming in than we expected? Do we have not enough room because we just have so many kids in the middle school? Or because the building isn't efficient enough, or?
Yes. So there are a couple of things that come into play. As I said, Matt Cashman and I went around, we were measuring almost all of the rooms. In eighth grade, they have world language, so they have an extra class. So our eighth grade is divided amongst five classes. Our seventh grade is a pretty large class, they're divided amongst four, they don't have the world language. And some of those classes were already at 28 and 29. So we, we do have, I think, probably the same percentage of kids wanting to be remote. We just had pretty, we have large classes and small classrooms, so that's where that, does that make sense? I'm not sure if, if I'm explaining it so it makes sense to people.
So we're still looking at 25% roughly want to be remote, and 75 roughly are coming in.
So I knew that for sure a couple of weeks ago. Donna, can you look at our numbers? I don't have the, oh, right here. So middle school, look at that, 23% remote. 77%. Yes, thank you.
So we have sort of a bubble in sixth and seventh, or you just don't have enough physical space at Runlet?
Yeah, sixth grade is, is pretty good right now. We're doing okay with sixth grade. It's seventh grade primarily is the tough one, and, and eighth a little bit, too. Seventh grade is the one that's really tough, because the students are spread out over only four classes and not the five, that, that they're spread out among in eighth grade. So if you have 300 kids spread out amongst five classes, the number per class will be smaller. Spread out amongst four, and so that, exactly. Yes, yes, I was just trying to make sure.
Pre-COVID, the classes were already bigger.
Correct.
And so in COVID, we just have that. So pre-COVID, thank you, the classes were already bigger, and so now, as we enter in, we have some of that.
Right.
And I had, I had a question, so thanks for the mic, I had another one. The, it's interesting that you talked about the, the teacher that is quarantined, or anyone who's quarantined. I encourage you, and I, I think it's going to be a challenge for everyone, in the fact that we will be pivoting from groups of people being quarantined to not being quarantined, to three people being remote to, for, because they have some sort of, you know, they might have a cough or a cold. And, and it could be varying sizes of groups. It will change every single day or week. And, and we're just going to have to be that kind of flexible, so that, you know, my language teacher today is hybrid, and we're all in there, but for two weeks, they, you know, just because someone in their neighborhood, or whatever the reason, or, or they just are showing allergy symptoms, for that matter, are going to have to be, you know, remote, and we're just going to have to flex with that. Do you foresee any challenges that we could look at that? And then my second question on that, is you talked about physical space. Do we need to, to look at adding structures or temporary tents or structures or whatever going into January? And if so, I would just advise you to please bring it to the attention of Matt Cashman and the, the board and the capital facilities committee. Because it seems like this is the pinch point here in middle school.
And, you know, we still have some other spaces that we can use, but they're not good classroom spaces, so we're, you know, we're, we're a little hesitant to have kids sitting, you know, in the gym, you know, with a monitor.
Even temporary barriers or physical, you know, structures that are temporary, that we could have constructed for this school year, is a possibility, and I would encourage you to, to think of those possibilities, to be able to accommodate all the families and all students, so.
Absolutely. And like I said, I want to be really careful with the, I know waitlist got us into a little trouble, so I want to be really careful about saying that our numbers are close. We just have to really be creative problem solvers, but we have been so far, so.
I think we also have to remember that teachers are pivoting based on what their kids' schools are doing. It's not just us, it's a dominant factor.
Yes, Gina said that our teachers
And parents with their workspaces, and there's so many.
Are responding based on what's happening in their own school, their own children's schools, and that's true. We had a situation like that this, in workplaces, and we had a situation like that this week. Yes.
Gina, we can share. It's okay. Just let me share. So you guys have yours, you have yours.
Does anybody else have questions?
Is there a date?
Tom, is your hand old? Sorry, phrased incorrectly, is that? Do you want to put your hand down?
All right, Danielle, that, that's going to cost you.
This is why I don't talk into the microphone.
Yeah, that, that's, I'm an old hand at this point.
Okay. Sorry.
So now, wonderful Mike Riordan will talk, and let us know what's happening here in this very building.
Good evening, everyone. I want to talk about how our first five days in hybrid have gone, in terms, again, of things that have gone well. And then I want to share with the board a couple of concerns that I do not want to overstate, because it's so early in this experiment, and, but I want to put out in front of you guys and, and the public. So first, and I want you to understand that the first thing I want to say is about our students, and I'm not saying that in a pro forma way, it's, it's their adherence to our expectations and the protocols that we put in place, and their patience has really been impressive. I think it probably reflects, it's reasonable to say, in their parents. But they have been outstanding, and I, I want folks to know that we have noticed that and we appreciate it very much, because it would not be working at all without that. I also want to recognize our teachers, as always, for their, their dedication to a very difficult situation and year, in ways that I'll talk about in a second. Their commitment to meeting the needs of all of our kids, not just the kids who are in class, but also our remote learners, our zoomers, which is as it should be, but it's, you know, I, I will just say anecdotally, I heard today about some experiential learning, where our science teachers are taking kids down to ponds and so forth, and, and remote learners would meet them down there. And some of them who had particular concerns about exposing themselves to a lot of other peers and adults would actually go down later on after they left to recreate the experience. So, you know, that type of commitment and sense of community within a classroom is pretty impressive. So both of those key constituencies, if you will, are, are doing very well. And I, again, I would emphasize, I'm not saying that just for the sake of saying it. They are, both of those groups are, are doing outstanding. I also think our safety protocols, our cleaning protocols, our, our one-way staircases, the kids lining up before class, on the footprints we have all around the building, they're masking, they're distancing at lunch, you know, all that's working really well. Of course, there are issues from time to time. It's not perfect. It won't be perfect, you know, if, regardless of how long we stay at this, but it's good. And it's good because people, the kids and the teachers are recognizing the importance of what we do. people, the kids and, and the teachers are recognizing the importance of what we do. Head custodian Dan Gontars and our custodians are doing, as they always do, yeoman's work in making sure that the, the building is cleaned every day, that the desks are atomized and, and ready to go the next day. So all those components are working very well. The, the protocols we have of where kids are entering in the morning and going through the, through the temperature taking, all the rest of that, are, are picking up a free lunch, going to specific holding areas and waiting for the start of the day as opposed to just hanging with their friends. That, that's, they are following that to the letter. And it's, it's made everything work very well as we've opened up. So with that said, we're a high school, so our academics are at the forefront. And that's not to say that we don't spend a lot of time, more time than ever before, thinking about social emotional learning. We do. But academics are important. And what I'm seeing and hearing from our staff is that blended learning has, has been a challenge over the first few days. Particularly, I'm talking about the idea of, you know, you've got 12 or 14 kids in front of you, and then you've got three or four or five kids zooming in to it. And again, because of our teachers' commitment to making sure that there's equity in how they respond to the needs of all, both groups of learners, that's been difficult. It's all new. This is not something that any of us have practiced before. We had the choice, I want to acknowledge, of going a different route, of creating a remote academy essentially with our remote teachers, a kind of a separate, separate deal. But we didn't, we made the choice that we didn't want kids to have to change teachers and change courses, or perhaps not even have access to some of the courses that they wanted. But it's, 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 it's been hard, especially for, you know, it's, it's like anything else, folks. Some, some of our staff go through this like, they've been doing it for the last 15 years. But for a significant number of our teachers getting acclimated, and again, it's, you know, we're talking about the first, in terms of the kids being here, the four, four days at this point, it's been challenging. So we're looking at different solutions, different support, not, solutions is the wrong term. We're looking at different approaches and supports for this, including bringing monitors into the classroom so that they can kind of facilitate what's going on with kids who are zooming in. Certainly, we want to do a lot of sharing of best practices, both among our faculty members, but also looking at professional journals and so forth and things that are outside. We're also looking at whether some, some disciplines, and this will be self-evident, I think, when you think about science classes, labs, think about art classes, world language classes, are particularly difficult to replicate remotely with what goes on in the classroom. So we're thinking, we're, we're, we're considering whether we need to rethink the way that we're delivering that curriculum to remote learners as we go forward. Again, I don't, I don't want to overstate it. I just want to, I want to state it. I don't want to overstate it about, because we, we need to shake this down a little bit. You know, one of the things, for example, that we did was, as we were thinking about our, our needs in terms of duties and so forth in the school, was we, we took, we took away collaborative groups, put them all on Wednesdays. That was a significant step because collaborative groupings among our teaching staff are a significant part of the culture of the school. When we met with the curriculum facilitators this morning, they asked specifically for those to be reinstated. And that's something we want to do anyway. I'm not sure that we can do it right now. I think we need a little bit more time in terms of the overall coverage of the building to make sure that everything is going well. And everything is going well in terms of kids not wandering around the building or being masked and all the rest of that. But I think we need a few more days before we do that. The other, the other thing that I'm concerned about is that we have, and there's no easy answer to this, we have 20% of our faculty out remotely now, 22 teachers. And of course, every day we have anywhere from five to six to seven or eight teachers who are out because they're sick or they have a personal day or, or the rest of that. So that means that for a significant number of our students who are hybrid, they have to spend part of the day in the gym or in the student center or in the library. So we are thinking about ways to address that. I actually spoke with Kathleen today about the possibility going forward of hiring not just monitors, but actually, for example, kids, young adults who are graduating, say, from the teaching program at Plymouth State, who get their certification. I have colleagues who are retired from my previous posting in Pembroke that I think I could, might be able to entice to come in. And I'm wondering if they can work with, with these classes in tandem with a remote teacher so that we have someone in the classroom who knows the discipline and can facilitate what's going on in there rather than just rely on remote situations with those kids. So those are not insignificant things. They're important to the, to, to moving forward academically. With that said, I want to return to, to my opening point of the sense of community and commitment among our kids, among our teachers to getting this job done. Again, it's very early. This whole thing could turn into Wild Indians and Cowboys over the next week or two, but I don't think that's going to happen. I think it's, it's the nature of the community, both the community at CHS and the, and the larger Concord community, that they understand what we're dealing with and have made a commitment that they want to be in school and get this done. It's our job as administrators to kind of figure out how we can do that better so that some of these academic issues, these pedagogical issues are addressed and we can move forward more effectively. Oh, and I want to say one other thing. This is, I guess this is kind of a Matt Cashman thing because he needs all the kudos he can get. He doesn't have any friends. I don't know if any people, anyone knew that or not. I'm just giving Matt a hard time. We have ours, our comments A and B, all those old lockers are gone. They were ripped out today. We're ultimately going to get some rubberized flooring in there. But even before that happens, those huge and actually quite beautiful areas, there, it's really prime real estate in both of those, if you envision them with the big windows and so forth, are going to be available both for lunch, which will allow us to get kids out of classrooms who are eating lunches in classrooms right now, which is difficult for some of our teachers who feel, you know, uncomfortable about having different kids coming in and eating and all the rest of that. So now we can, we can, we can move those groups down to those two areas. But they'll also be able to get kids who are staying in the building and have remote classes into tables and chairs as opposed to sitting in bleachers in the gym. So that's going to make a big difference as well. Questions?
I have a question. So this goes back to the very beginning, when you were talking about certain classes that are hard to replicate remote and hybrid, like, like an art class, jewelry or something where, do we have flexibility where a remote family could elect to have their child come for one class? Like, like they come for jewelry, but they do everything else remotely?
Yeah, we have, we have complete flexibility for that. In fact, we encourage kids to leave if they do not have a class. You know, not, just because, we, we don't want kids hanging around in the building if, if they're not engaged. Now, that's not possible for all kids.
No.
Especially the younger kids. If they don't, if their parents can't pick them up or something, they have to stay there until their next in-person class takes place. But yeah, we, we not only have flexibility, we encourage that type of movement just because we don't want to have anyone in the building, adult or student, who just not need to be there.
My next piece would be, and I think this is more common with older students. I get a lot of feedback from some of my friends with freshmen and sophomores that the peer pressure by the upperclassmen to follow the rules. So you have seniors that want to be here for their senior class. So if they see someone not wearing their mask, it's sometimes the peer pressure is what makes it work. I have a couple of friends whose kids are in college, same thing. That those kids want to be in college. So hopefully, we can create a culture where some of our older students that maybe have a bigger investment just because of their age and it's their last year here, you know, they can set this great example. So it's sort of a neat little piece of feedback that it's not you having to remind these kids all the time. It's their upperclassmen who are like, hey, I don't want to get sent home. Put your mask on.
That, that's the ideal, that the older kids are saying in a sen, in essence, this is what, what it means to be a Concord High School student. This is what it means to be a responsible person. And one kid saying that is worth 20, re-saying something 20 times.
That's right. That's right. And then my final sort of clarification or question would be, I think it's, you know, I know when I was teaching here in the district and we had somebody on a long-term medical leave, sometimes you could hire like a, a permanent subtype position for that particular class. So it sounds like the, the people you'd like to hire, you know, like young educators or retired educators could sort of, is it, is it similar to that type where they can connect with a teacher or a subject area so that there's no interruption if a teacher's absent?
That's exactly what I'm talking about, Barb, is that they would, they would work in tandem.
Yep.
It's still, it's still the remote teacher's class as it should be. But by, by having that, someone with experience or, or at least training as an educator.
Right.
They can, they can work with the kids in person and facilitate what's supposed to be going on.
So they're like an extension in the building?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
It's just a whole different dynamic, as, as is pretty obvious.
Well, and then certified educators as well. It comes with a measure of safety in terms of background checks and, you know, their, their responsibility with kids. You know, it's, there's a measure of safety in that when I think of all these new people coming into our buildings. It's important and necessary, but that's a terrific idea. Okay. Does anyone else have a comment or a question? I see Jim's hand up and then I see David's hand up.
Dave was up. I think Dave was before me.
All right, David, you first.
Hi, Mike. Dave Parker.
Hi, Dave.
Thank you for all your hard work. I'm, I'm glad you brought up the, the point, which is, this is really ultimately all about the learning. I think that, having been at this September 2nd, in person and remote, a lot of the things that we thought were going to drive us nuts did, but we got used to them. And then, and then most of the kids and families have been terrific around safety and pandemic illnesses and such. But really why we're there is to put the best academic program together we can. And as imperfect as it will probably be, it, you're striving for a quality education for our kids. And I think that's where our heads will go as you settle out some of these curveballs. The kids want to learn, the teachers want to teach, and, you know, these are good people all around. And, and I think that's where you're going to find yourself in, in short shift. So thank you for your attention to the, the learning piece. It's critically important.
Yeah. Well, and, and, yeah, academics are obviously at the heart of what we do. I would say, however, that, and I've said this to the kids, that the most important question, the, the most important thing that they are going to learn is how communities deal with crises like we're in. And I think their response over the first five days and their adherence to what we're asking them to do and their patience is demonstrative proof that they understand that, that they're learning that.
Thank you, David. Jim, did you have a question?
So, Principal Reardon, I'm, I'm happy that you addressed the issues that you have because I, I interact with an awful lot of high school students, friends and, and neighbors and all that. And they nailed the exact same thing you said. The remote teachers seem to be a bigger problem with the high school and how we handle that than other schools. And so I encourage you to, to consider to pursue those items. You know, someone, you know, if we, I know you encourage the students to leave the, the building if they, their teacher is remote and take it somewhere else. But, you know, there's only so far you can go in nine minutes till your next class starts and then get back here in nine minutes to be able to do that. So the teachers may have to adapt. We may have to look at a difference of how we handle that schedule. And the other thing is that I hear quite a bit is that, you know, you have a lot of kids in the gym taking different classes, which is pretty loud, a lot of things going on, that being in the gym, they can't even hear their teacher, much less respond to the teacher in that situation. So I'm happy to hear that you're exploring some other areas that we can put these kids in. And I will throw out the same thing as I said to Principal Fitzgerald, is that is, looking at the gym or looking at spaces that temporary or semi-permanent structures that we have to install in various parts of the school, please consider that and bring that to Matt Cashman. And then if we need to allocate some capital facilities funds, you know, to create rooms in the gym or partitions in other locations, and that helps the academics, you know, we will consider that and take a look at what we can do and work with Mr. Cashman on those items.
Appreciate that.
So don't, don't hesitate to, to think creatively and, and please bring it to not only this committee, but the Capitol Facilities Committee as well because, you know, we're in a rather, somebody said wonky the other day, but I think that's a pretty good description of the year. You know, we're in a unique situation and we're going to have to have some creative solutions and commit some, you know, resources to solve that. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Any more questions? David, your hand is still up. I'm assuming it's just still up.
His old hand.
Yeah, is that your old hand? Okay. Mr. Reardon, thank you so much.
I didn't wipe this off.
So we'll give Donna a second to get ready and Donna will be sharing lots of numbers with us, I believe.
Okay, so just going to share a few things with you, actually. One is the number of hybrid. I, I popped this up here while Pauline was talking about the, the answer to that question about the percentages. And the percentages have, have been pretty consistent ever since we started thinking about it. About 20% overall, as you can see, of kids who chose to be in remote and 80%, just close to 80% with a little bit of variation. And middle school does have a little bit higher percentage of remote learners. And high school and elementary look quite similar. Happy to answer any questions about this. And we also did want to look at attendance, knowing that it's still a little whiffy, you know, in terms of, as Susan Lozey has said, in terms of taking attendance. But I grabbed a snapshot from Power School yesterday. So this is October 1st through 20th, 2020. And you can see the percentage of students in attendance. And then I thought, oh, well, I wonder how that compares to last year. So I grabbed the same period last year. And, and it's, and it's pretty good.
That's reassuring.
I know. I was, I think we were reassured. And again, as Paulette has said, you know, we, we're looking for everybody to be there. We'd love 100%, but it's, it's, it's solid. So we're, we're happy to see that. Now, again, we're still, as Susan, I think, has said, we really want those, you know, we want kids engaged all day, you know, every day. And so we're still, we're still working on that. So that's all. That's really all I have, just those two. If anybody has any questions about numbers, we probably can answer them.
Well, I think the attendance piece too, so much of it is how it's taken and how it's recorded. That can, that can shift the actuality of the numbers in so many ways. You know, if a student's there for two hours in the morning and disappears, but all the work's handed in. So is that student absent or not? So there's so many ways to sort of look at it. Then you could have students, I had some students in the spring that came every day and did nothing. So, okay, they're, I see their face, but they're not doing the work. So this is, this is another fluid piece. All of this is fluid. But, but those numbers are a bit reassuring because that means that, that there's contact with that many students in some form, which is, is, is reassuring. Kathleen? in some form, which is, is reassuring. Kathleen?
Yeah. Well, I want to thank our three principals and, and the same last week, two weeks ago when we met. I mean, they've really worked hard. And their team, including their teachers and all their support staff, have been just incredible in terms of the work to make this happen and to be able to provide for all the youngsters. So kudos to everybody. I really, it's really, as stressful as this is, it's really a pleasure to work with these folks. So just, just a little insight into how I feel about it. Listen, I'm going to end up with the stressors. I'm the last speaker for tonight. And I guess I'll call my part about, I'm just going to talk about the stressors and the things that have really been very difficult, as I can hear my phone ringing over there. So ignore it. And it's my work phone. So it's not one of, my husband wanting to know what's going to be for supper tonight. It's
It's not your Wednesday night dinner group?
Yeah, right. It's not for dinner. I hope he has dinner when I get home. But anyway, let me talk about one of the things that have really come to people's attention today. Say that again?
I just don't want to talk to you, so if you can just wait a minute and we get that one.
Okay. No, no, no. She's fixing it. Are you looking for the link?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, did we lose contact with our remote folks?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll get it fixed.
Yeah, we're just trying to get back for our
Yep.
the school board members that are on.
This is being recorded so we can cut and paste, right?
Right, yeah.
It's gathered, gathered, so you have to go out of the public, so this is technically part of it.
Oh, yeah. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, I get it. That's all right. People can, people can get a snack when this part comes on TV.
Maybe we should serve snacks, right?
[laughing]
Better yet, sell snacks.
That's right. This is when we run to the bathroom.
Which, by the way, you should tell people that we have had some internet or difficulties. We're not on Concord TV online tonight.
Right.
We are on Channel 6, but it's because of some
Oh, yeah, we didn't actually share that, did we?
Well, but my understanding too is that those are not necessarily internal.
I don't see anything except Liza, but I do hear you now.
Okay, you're back.
So, Tom, I think it's you and me and David and Lyndon. And I think we've also been separated from the presentation.
Well, you're back.
Can we see you now?
You're back.
Oh!
Yay!
Good. We couldn't hear anything for a while there.
Yeah.
Since Donna posted her presentation.
We did take a break. We lost internet. So
Oh, okay, great.
I, I think, I think we're all back. So I'm going to continue my discussion. And the first stressor that we have is obviously the numbers in Merrimack County have gone up.
Okay.
They have
Excuse me for interrupting. If you put something on the screen, if there's a way to, to get it up onto the large screen for all of us to see here, that'd be terrific. If not, then we'll just listen on.
Yeah, I don't have anything, Tom, to put up. I don't.
All right.
Okay.
Great. Great answer.
So, as you know
One second. Did you guys see the numbers? Were you able to see the percentages and the numbers? You didn't see any of that?
For the attendance and
Could they go to their, could they go to on their laptops on their Chromebooks to go see them in their, in like our shared files? Do you have those things in a shared file? Is that what I thought I saw? So can we tell then they could go into their Chromebooks in the shared file? And on a shared file, I guess?
Not yet, but we will. We, right before this, we shared daily attendance rates at all of the schools, elementary, middle and high. And we also showed the breakout of the percentage of students in hybrid and the percentage of students in remote, so that you could see that breakout. And that you've asked for those numbers over the course of our meeting. So Donna will make sure that they're put in the shared file for you tomorrow to look at.
In general summary, the attendance was equal to or better than last year at this time, which, which is reassuring because, you know, that means we're connecting with the same number of kids we were connecting with a year ago. And attendance is a bit fluid for all those obvious reasons. And then it was roughly 80% average, 80% hybrid, 20% remote district-wide. That was kind of the average.
Other than middle school, which is closer to 76.
Yeah. Yeah, there's more remote at the middle school than either of the other two populations. But the district average was 80/20. So that's all you missed.
We good?
Okay.
Okay. So one of the, one of the things that have, has come up in recent days is the fact that Merrimack County has been placed in the highest level in the red, if you will, in terms of the number of cases. And so people have asked and inquired and all the media outlets called today relative to why we aren't going to remote, because we said that if we would go in the red, we would, we would go to remote. But I, I, I was concerned about that because the other two pieces of data, which are hospitalizations and percentage of those who have been, who have been diagnosed with the COVID virus, is in the green. So those two are at the minimal range. And the, and the number of cases in Merrimack County is considered in the substantial range, which is the red. However, we did talk to Department of Health and Human Services yesterday and indicated that the number in Merrimack County is in part, and I say in part, due to the long-term healthcare facilities that have had a high number of COVID-19 folks. So that number has impacted Merrimack County. So with that in mind, I, that was a factor for me as I try to decide where we need to be. We also know that in our schools, we've had no transmission of cases in our schools. Now, we've had three cases, right? We had one in the late summer, outside program, the youngster. We had one adult at the high school. And we had, just recently, last week, a youngster at Krista McAuliffe. But none of those caused any transmission of the virus to others. So we had no breakouts in the schools. Those, those youngsters, those folks that had it were because of an outs, outside, something that happened outside of our schools. So we know that our schools continue to remain fairly safe. Dr. Chan has reported on a number of occasions that he's very pleased about our schools and the way that we're handling the cases and that we're not seeing significant transmission, none, at least in Concord, between students. We've not had that. Now, have we had to isolate and, and, and people had to go into quarantine? Yes, we did. They went in the quarantine. They went to remote learning while they were there. And then, and, and a teacher, should they have that same situation, became a teacher of remote learning. And we were able to accommodate everyone. So today, tonight, at 10 minutes of seven, I still will stay in hybrid for the district. I'd like to. But I just want to be clear that at any time, that can change. I mean, this, this is, is, changes constantly. And the data that we get will impact those decisions. So I know that our original matrix that we set, if we had those high numbers, that we would go to remote, but given the particular cases and where they were located, led me to stick with the hybrid until such time that I, we get beyond that, those numbers.
So Merrimack County covers a number of communities. Are Concord numbers fairly low still?
Well, Concord numbers have actually gone up a little bit. I think yesterday was at 36, which is a little high for us because we were around eight, anywhere from eight to 12. We've been, we watched that also. So we did see an uptick. I don't know what's, what caused that.
Do we have an age demographic on that? Or is it just a number?
No, I don't. I don't. But we know there were some things that happened. We know that there were some issues around hockey and there were ice rinks and in particular, not our own ice rink, not our Concord ice rink, but outside. And there's been tournaments and youngsters have been attending. And that has caused some, I noticed in southern New Hampshire, that, that was some, some issues. But I don't really know what, what particular issues caused the uptick in, in Concord. But we're wa, we're watching that because obviously that community transmission is, is going to affect us because, you know, parents and kids and families. So we'll keep an eye on that. I just, I just kind of wanted to alert you to that. Again, I think that all three of our principals spoke about it. I mean, as we observe and we go out into the buildings and see what's going on, I mean, they're right on. All of the protocols that you put in motion back in August are in place and, and are working. And everyone is taking it very seriously. And I think that's what helped us. You know, and there are hybrid. I know some people have not, you know, aren't in love with the fact that the kids are only in school two days. But by having hybrid and reducing those classes in half, we have much smaller cohorts. And so when, when, when a situation does occur, it doesn't affect a large group. We don't have 29 kids in a classroom. You know, we have 10 or 11. So it, it, in some ways has helped us in terms of containment and, and so that there isn't a great transmission. So again, I, I, I can't say enough about the protocols. We've heard from, you know, Matt Cashman has done a great job with his team. They've kept these buildings. They clean them down. You know, when we had the situation at Krista, they were there on Sat, Friday night and Saturday morning. Every aspect of that building was reclaimed. So, I mean, we, we, we're using all of the cleaning tools and materials that Matt has put in place for his, for his team. So again, I, I think we, we're, we're following what we said we would follow in, in terms of that. You heard about staffing. And one of the problems is, is that you have to understand these are family people. And so they are susceptible outside of school. And that's has happened, where we've had to have our teachers quarantine for, maybe they were in contact with somebody who was later diagnosed with COVID-19. So we are constantly trying to manipulate through that. Remote teacher one day and, you know, or they're home because they had, they didn't feel good, but then it wasn't really a, a diagnosis of COVID-19, but they stayed home that day because they didn't feel well, which is what we ask them to do. So we have some, a number of folks who have agreed to become monitors to help us out there. Michael's idea of retirees and, and some students who may graduate very soon from the, from the system, the university system, maybe we can have some students to help us out there too. But it does affect us. And it isn't something that happens in school. It's something that can happen at home and outside in the community. The last thing, I, I don't think we need to make any decisions, but I want to present something to you for your consideration, your advice, advisement, I'm sure I'll hear from the community. But we have the holidays coming up. And I had hoped that we would have some guidance from Health and Human Service around travel. I haven't received that yet. I'm hoping soon. But you know that families gather for Thanksgiving, for the, for the, the holidays. And I'm, I'm concerned about that. That means traveling to see people. It means out and about in the community. It means the gatherings. And we know that lots of times the, the transmission can be from within families. So I'm, I want you to think about us in terms of, should we pivot prior to Thanksgiving to a remote environment through the holidays? Now, I'm not making a decision. I'm not asking you for that decision, but I really think it's something that we need to think about and talk about. Now, that's if we get to that point. I mean, we may not get there based on any data that I get. But if, in fact, that's a possibility, I'd, I'd like you to think about it and provide us with some, some of your thinking on it.
I think, I, you know, I think it's something this committee specifically needs to really think about, but our whole board really, really watch, watch the numbers, ponder. Again, I go on that, that educators group and lots of districts, well, lots, two or three that I know of for sure have already made this decision. So again, we have to look at what's best for Concord. But other than like, you know, air travel and, and old folks' homes and things like this, one of the major transmission sources is family gatherings, is small weddings, you know, big family dinners, those kinds of things. It's also very hard, you know. I, I work out with a woman and her daughter wanted to get out of class and so she said she had a headache. And of course, she had to go home and get tested and, you know, all of these things. So, you know, these little things that used to work, you know, now cause this big problem. And, you know, a lot of times, parents are, you know, don't tell, if you don't feel good, don't say anything. And it's not because they want to spread the COVID, but they want life to be normal. And my fear, and, and this doesn't mean I think anyone is dishonest, but I just think it will be very difficult to really get an honest handle on who travels and who doesn't. And again, it's, it's like the upperclassmen reminding the underclassmen to wear their masks. The families that stay home and forego all of these things are the ones that suffer equally from the families that don't stay home. So I just think these are things we need to think about. It puts a lot of pressure on our building leaders and our, and our staff. And, you know, ultimately affects the students. I don't think any of us are ready to make a decision on this right now.
Yeah, I, I think we just, I needed to present it to you for your consideration.
Gina would like to.
And I just want to add too, the, the caution that if we put 14 days, if we assume that we are going to have to primarily quarantine after the holidays, if we put 14 days of remote on the end of January, so we run it out to January 16th or whatever, well, how do we prevent people from being in Florida until the 16th? And then we've got another 14 days. You know, if, I can tell you that, that when I knew I had to have my child back in school on a certain day, well, that meant that I had to fly on X-day. But if we plan ahead of time and say, well, we're going to be remote, they can attend school from Florida and they don't have to come back until the 16th. And then we're stuck with another 14 days and another 14 days. And so I just want to, I want to caution
That's the whole mix, that's the whole mess with this is, is, you know.
That's a mess.
Okay, second semester starts the week after Martin Luther King Day, at least at the high school. And so you have to be 14 days clear or 10 days or whatever before you can enter the building. And we have to rely on that honesty. So I think, and again, I use this analogy with you on the phone today, Kathleen, that normally, you know, our school is on a granite foundation. And right now, our whole school is on a rubber boat in the ocean. And when the water's smooth, things go okay. And the littlest bit of wind can cause a wave. And now suddenly it's not smooth. And I think the holiday season is going to exemplify all of this uncertainty in, in ways that we can just not even predict right now. So I'm glad you brought it up because we can start thinking about it. I also would encourage everybody to pay attention to what other districts are doing. And not just in New Hampshire, but everywhere. Because I think we can learn a lot from the successes and things of our cohorts in other towns.
I think there's been a lot of discussion in other communities about it, but I think they're at the same place we are. They're talking about it and they're trying to make sense about what would be right for their district. I know that Kiasaj has already decided to do a two-week around Thanksgiving. So one of the other concerns I have, and I, and I like consistency, but I don't want to be in and out and in and out and in and out. I think that's really challenging for families as they try to make sure that they have the appropriate care for their kids, especially the younger ones. It's very inconsistent. Our teach, our teachers have just done a fabulous job. And, and they had to do some, you know, pivoting from one to another. And I'd like to be as consistent as I can as they prepare lessons and, and the work for, for our students. So I want to be careful with that too.
Yeah. I think we just have to keep an open mind right now and be willing to take in whatever information comes forward. Does anyone else have a comment or a question?
Jim doesn't.
Yeah.
Thank you, Superintendent. I have, I'm going to, I appreciate you bringing that, the last piece up. And yeah, if you leave even, you know, five New England states, I don't care if you're in a car or, or a rubber boat, you're going to have to have 14 days of quarantine. I'm going to change back to the other topic, to a previous topic though. And I appreciate the fact that you are not just, you know, that you are not just looking at straight data, but you're also looking at the facts behind the data. But if we would get to a point where you would determine that we would need to go to a remote situation for a couple of weeks or even for just four days, as some other, how are we going to communicate that in as timely manner as we can to all of the parents and teachers? communicate that in as timely manner as we can to all of the parents and teachers and all of the stakeholders? The communication thing is, is really challenging, but so very important. And also, if we're not going, if you're not making a change in decisions, how will you communicate that to people so that they're updated as we go through this time? Because we're right on a cusp around, you know, we're seeing some increase, we expected some increase, but we're trying to interpret it. So if you could answer that, I think you'd help a lot of parents.
So we have a lot of ways in which to do that. And of course, you know, I've been trying to get letters out to the families. I have another letter scheduled for this week, this weekend, relative some of the issues I talked to you about tonight. We also know that we have great outlets in terms of, I talked to NPR today, I talked to Concord Monitor and I talked to Patch. So I was able to get that message out to them. In addition to the parent letter, of course, there would be a staff letter. But, you know, we have the opportunity too to use our radio stations because we have a snow chain that we use if we have a snow day, right? And that same kind of information can go out via Channel Nine and the radio station. So we'll use, and of course, School Messenger, which is pretty standard for us. So we will use all of those outlets. And I really want to be able to give families some time, Jim, you know, not just all of a sudden, you know, throw it on them because that's been the challenge for all of them. At least that's what I hear from our families. And I, and I know how challenging that can be.
Yeah, I think the more communication is better.
The more, the better. I, I think we have to just, I just have to make sure that we're getting that out. Our principals are great too, you know, they send out, they're constantly sending out messages to our families. So I, I think that will, that's effective.
I'm not sure if families would be willing to do this, but even just each school building, you know, contacting the families to, to see who has plans and just say, look, if you are planning to travel, God bless you, but you'll need to, you know, stay home when you get back. And we need the honesty around that. Because if, if we didn't have a large number of families traveling, you know, really traveling airplanes and, you know, far away, that, that could also impact what we decide to do as a district. So, you know, again, it's people's personal plans and privacy, you know, we can't get too picky. But, you know, if, if that information showed that we didn't have a, a large percentage of our families traveling, then that, that could make a difference as well.
And I, I think it's also sort of important, I mean, not to get on a soapbox, but if people want their kids to be in school, that this is not normal times. And it's hard to say, don't travel. But if you want your kids to be in school and to have this consistency, this is the year to make that sacrifice and say, maybe we're going to do things a little differently this year. So just putting that out there too.
I, I think we're all going to experience that. I mean, we talk about the simplest things, just Thanksgiving dinner, you know, you're used to having all your family there. Maybe you can't have as many people that, you know, all of us are going to make those sacrifices. I think you're right, Danielle.
And I saw something today, just to kind of go off of that, you know, of saying like, oh, you know, Halloween, oh, these kids have gone through so much already. How can we take that away from them? And just sort of trying to change people's mindset to say, no, maybe we're not taking something away, but we're going to do things a little differently this year. And as a family, we're going to bob for apples or, you know, have a scavenger hunt at our house. And it's just a different experience. And it can be just as awesome and exciting, but just sort of reshaping things. So it's, you know, it's not a loss, but it's just a different way to handle things. So that's it.
Tom and then David.
Thank you. So I, my only script to this good discussion is that we try to set a drop dead date so that parents can be informed. They may not like whatever decision we eventually make, but they will certainly appreciate the fact that we say by a certain date, we're going to tell you what's going to happen. And we really need to, to think about it. Maybe at the board meeting, maybe, you know, that 10 days from now, we'll have a, we'll have an idea. But I just think that we need to put it out there to parents that these are the things that are bubbling around in our head right now. And we may end up, we will have a, a date for you where you will know exactly what's going to happen. And this is the date. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. David?
I, I do agree with Tom, but the other thing I think we need to start spreading the message around is that we're not an island. When we ran into a situation where a kid had another kid over, that kid played on the hockey field and his friend plays on the hockey field and he comes into someone's house. Well, the parents have a responsibility to not only themselves and their family, but also to the larger community. And, and we are an island. We interact with all sorts of people out there. And so I think this is a good discussion to remind people that it's how they live their life every day, where they go. Make sure they continue to wear masks. And if you're going to allow somebody into your house that may have been compromised, you need to think about that. I know the discussion in general in the, in the larger community and literature is going in that direction. But I think it's an important thing to remember because we can do everything right and still be challenged by those types of circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Liza.
Thank you. Unrelated to travel, but related to quarantine. We got a message from, sorry, I, I don't know if that feedback's coming. I'll try and make it short. We got a message from a parent whose child was asked to quarantine. And her, she, she was disappointed that she didn't get more information about what she should do and what remote school would look like for her child for the 14 days of the quarantine. I'm hoping the superintendent can shed a little bit of light on that for all of us. Again, it kind of goes back to communication. I realize that part of this was Health and Human Services' responsibility and, and maybe this one family slipped through the cracks. But can you just describe what, how it's supposed to work when a student is asked to enter quarantine, or a staff member for that matter? Thank you.
So when we have a case and it's identified and we're made aware of a positive test result, in, in this case, we were notified by the family. They immediately, and, and the, and the youngster was not in school at the time for two or three days before the identification. But the staff did identify, that was their job, to identify all those folks who may have been in contact with that particular student. All of that information is, was immediately provided, this happened to be a Friday afternoon, was immediately provided to the Department of Health and Human Services. They indicated that by the weekend, they would have contacted all of the families and I, and, and indicated to them next steps. In the particular case you're talking about, as I understand it, that family was not notified by Department of Health and Human Services, and I don't know why they weren't. Now, we have a call into Health and Human Services to find out, you know, what happened. So that, you know, was there some information that wasn't correct that they got? Was, you know, we, we just didn't know. But to, to this point, and I'm, I'm looking over to Donna, I don't think we've heard back from them. We have not heard back as to why that didn't happen. The second part of that though, Liza, lies in the fact that, that the mom didn't know what next steps were for remote. As it was, the youngster just remoted into his class with the teacher. But it, but it was the mom who made that effort to find out what happened. I've had communication with mom, several communications with mom. And so what we need to look at to make sure that what we should do is once we, we, we need to make sure after they're identified, after Health and Human Service contacts and does the contact tracing and lets them know what to do, we then should send out a message to those families, youngsters, to let them know what their next steps are. In other words, this, this young student would be remoting into his teacher's classroom because the teacher was also remoting in to her classroom. We had to put a, another teacher in that room with that class. So it was a little confusing because the teacher was involved in that too and had to remote for four, and had to be quarantined for 14 days. So it was a little bit of a, of a number of issues. But we think the key to it will be, once the youngsters are identified, once they've been contacted by Health and Human Services, then we need to go back again to the family and say, okay, Johnny, Mary will be remoting into their class tomorrow, starting tomorrow for the next 14 days. Does that help you?
That does. Thank you. It sounds like it was a, a good learning experience.
Jim, then.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be loud so that Mike can pick me up anyway. So Superintendent, I think the, the question though, and I think a, a value would be, you know, for instance, my son gets a cough. And so we're going to keep him home for two days or three days or until it's gone, the way we would do it. Or, you know, he would be quarantined or whatever the thing that would come up, even if we're self-quarantining or doing. Is there a place where parents can go and find out the instructions of, okay, not coming to school today, but not feeling, you know, sick that they can't do it? How do I participate? How does a student participate in a remote situation? I mean, there are people talking about that. Snow days are over because we can now remote everything. Just a basic, is there a place that parents can go, get the instructions that say, okay, child is remote today, here's how they do it?
Right. Well, they'd have to contact their, their school and their principal's office. And they'd have to get that information for whatever the particular is for that teacher. I mean, they could be with a remote teacher if they're in the elementary school. They could simply be with a, a remote teacher at that particular grade level. Or in the case that I just described to Liza, they could actually remote right into their classroom. So it, it, my advice to families are, when you're in that situation and you're not sure, please reach out to the school. Let us know, one, that the youngster's sick. I mean, sometimes kids are sick and they just call in and say, my, my son or daughter is ill today and they won't be in school. And they're not in school. All right? They don't participate. But if they're home because it's a quarantine, they're not sick, they don't have any symptoms and they are, then they could continue with their learning.
But they shouldn't come into school if they're sick.
They should. Yeah. Do not, you know.
They didn't hear me because I'm not on a mic.
Right. I will repeat what Jim just said and is, is, and when you're not feeling well and you have a, a cold or runny nose, whatever, symptoms, please stay home.
Gina, and then I'll go after Gina.
So it occurs to me, and, and I'm not trying to point fingers, but it occurs to me that this is the second time that one of our students has fallen through the cracks because DHHS did not respond in the timeframe that people were expecting. Is there a way that we can put a protocol out there that says, this is what you do? DHHS has called you, or you've seen on the TV that this has happened or whatever, don't panic. You know, maybe even, and I may be waiting in here a little bit, but maybe even don't wait for DHHS. Stay home. Don't wait for them to call you to tell you to stay home.
Yeah. See, when they call though, they ask them questions. Were you wearing a mask? Were you six foot distancing? Did you have contact for greater than 10 minutes? They go through all of that. Okay? So they might not even have to quarantine.
But if they don't reach out to that family, in the absence of hearing something to the contrary from DHHS, I hate to say it, but for at least the community's safety, assume that it's not going to be good news and stay home. You know, I mean, this is not the first time that DHHS did not respond within the timeframe that we had hoped for.
My understanding, Gina, is, is that the staff at the school indicated to the family that they would probably have to do that. But they're not, that's not their call. That, I mean, they, they shared that in, in an advisory way, but that's really not their call.
Well, I'm just thinking, stay home until you hear otherwise.
Yeah. Well, I think that's the general feeling. Back to my friend with the little girl who went home with a headache. Because she exhibited a symptom, she, she could go and get the quick test at convenient MD, came negative, went and saw her doctor. She didn't have to quarantine for two weeks. And I didn't realize that that was a procedure until I spoke to you about it.
Well, if she doesn't, because is the headache a symptom that she has a lot? Does she, you know, there's a lot of different circumstances around that. I'm looking over to Donna. Donna, you want to say something? Yeah, I can tell.
Do you want to wife, Kathleen?
I don't know. We share things all the time.
We're so careful. We are. Really true.
Donna, make sure you speak loudly and slowly. I had a couple of people not able to hear you before.
Okay. Sorry about that. So just to clarify, because it can be confusing, and we talk about this a lot. There are two different kinds of times when you're not in school. One is called a quarantine and one is called isolation. So let me just give a good, and these are all described on our website. There's frequently asked questions and there's details on the website about this. But it can be confusing. If you have a symptom that is a COVID, on the COVID list of symptoms, then you cannot return to school until you have either had a test or followed what's called isolation practices. That is, you stay home for 10 days, you're, you no longer have a fever if a fever was one of your symptoms, and your symptoms are better. So that's one thing. If you have no symptoms and you have to quarantine because you've traveled or because you've had contact with somebody else, that's a 14-day quarantine. And it doesn't matter how many tests you have, you can't come back till the 14 days are over. So sometimes people get troubled with that. They think, well, I had to quarantine, but I'll just get, I'll wait a few days and get a test. Oh, look, it's negative now. I'll come back. No. The rules are you have to do the whole 14 days because you could theoretically get COVID on the second day or the fifth day or the 13th day. So that's why those rules are in place. I hope that helps. It is, it is challenging to keep it all in mind.
No, that was clarifying for me, you know, because I'm hearing this story and I'm thinking, okay, that isn't really what I understood. So I think my response to Gina's concern would be that I don't think anyone can rely on anyone right now. I mean, we have to rely on the Health Department because that's where our guidance comes from. But if we know that a little kiddo of ours goes home, then obviously anyone connected to that little kiddo would be considered a part of a group that needs to take precautions. And I think as a school district, communication to families is important so that people aren't just wondering, what do I do now? And I haven't heard anything for three days and I'm in a panic. And again, we, we discussed it, we've discussed it so many times and how tricky communication is. And we think we're doing a great job, but the one person that doesn't get the email now suddenly represents half the district. And so again, all we can do is just communicate, communicate, relationships, relationships, relationships.
I do want to put a plug in for DHHS though. I mean, they, you know, last week, they were inundated. We had, you know, an uptick everywhere in the state. And they've been very responsive to us as a school district, calling them, they respond to us. So I do know, Gina, that they're adding more staff on to, to be able to provide that kind of information to families. So that was one thing they heard loud and clear that they needed to do that. So.
Another thing I had heard was the pressure on the nurses, you know, where the school nurses, you know, they have a connection to that community and now they're getting yelled at, you know, and, you know, what a horrible position for them as well. And, and so I think if we can just be clear on why this is happening this particular way. I've been yelled at a lot lately. So it's, it's a very unfun part of this whole procedure right now. But we appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to comment or ask a question? All right, Kathleen.
So I guess my final question for you is, is that your schedule for your next meeting and some things that you'd like to, to discuss? So.
Well, I do want to get back to some of the things that the Instructional Committee normally looks at. We look at curriculum, we look at grading, we look at the calendar for next year. I feel like we can't, these things are still important. I would love to have a meeting that was just about these kinds of things. We could do that at the SAU. We wouldn't expect a big turnout for those kinds of things necessarily. And it gives our administrators a chance to look at the normal pieces of teaching and administrating and not all of, all of this.
And the only other thing that came up today is I met with Athletic Director Mello today, and we do need to talk about winter sports.
Yes. Oh, yes, absolutely.
We have basketball.
And I, and I'd love a, so winter sports is huge. I've gotten a ton of emails about that. And then also, I'd love, I would love a special ed update. Maybe Bob Belmont can come.
Say that again?
A special ed sort of update.
Yes, I wrote that. Yes, I wrote that down. We'll do a special ed update for you. Yes, absolutely. So I've got some good topics and we'll work on that. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, we don't have, do any of you have anything else to say, oh esteemed principals of ours? No, you're good. All right, then, oh Gina, go.
Yeah, sorry, I have one idea that I want to float. I just want to bring it up as something for the board to think about, the administration to think about, is establishing a CPAC in the district. Yes, CPAC is short for Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. There are a lot of people in the committee that are, or a lot of people in the community that are affected by special education needs. And I think we need to have a mechanism by which we can hear from parents and families.
The positive thing about this Gina, so I think we do really need to look in, look in an official manner, is special ed parents of any level of a disability in their child are perfectly willing to fight the fight and put the hours in because they want what's best for their children. And one of the best ways to have a successful special ed program is to have good parent input. And this year especially, I think it's very easy for people to point fingers and function out of anger. So I think, I think this is a great idea. So that should be added to our list of things to discuss as well. Thank you. Anything else? All right then, so I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second from a committee member? All right, so Danielle, second. So we don't need to do roll calls. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right. Everybody, thank you so much. We're doing the best we can. It's all we can do. Thank you for your time and efforts. It's not lost on us.